The meeting of February 12th, February 12th. School Board Workshop Session is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
All school board members are present and accounted for.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then if I am correct, Dr. B., you have something special for us next.
I do. I know we don't have any recognitions on tonight's agenda, but I would like to do a very brief spotlight on excellence with your permission. We would like to present Board Member Katie Browning with a gift for serving for two years as the Board President at Carmel Clay Schools, which equates, for those in the audience, to 14 years, you know, as far as school board president years goes. So it's kind of like dog years. It's like, you know, you kind of multiply that some. Katie's displayed outstanding leadership, heart, and grit in serving our district during one of the most difficult times probably in Indiana educational history. And so she's been a positive force, a great example of a leader who lives out the guiding principles of our district, and especially always keeping students first and in the center of every decision. So from our students, our staff, our families, and the community, we want to thank you, and we want you to know that we appreciate that all that you do and have done for the students and families we serve. So we would like to present you, since the bank's here, I'm gonna kind of do it by official. You can start heading this direction. But we're going to present you with this honorary gavel, which says, "Ms. Katie Browning, Carmel Clay School Board President from January 10th, 2022 to January 8th, 2024." So thank you very much from the Carmel Clay Schools.
And I know I am lucky enough to still have Katie on board to help me as I transition. Moving on to public comment, we do not have anyone signed up for public comment this evening. So next on the agenda is consent. And this part of the agenda is our personnel report, claims, and payroll. And as we've talked about in the past, this is kind of our housekeeping part of our meeting. That's our short part of the items that we have to address at every board meeting, but doesn't take up much of our time. So again, that's our payroll, accounts payable, personnel reports, minutes from previous meetings, and then other matters that we don't typically discuss for a very long period of time. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next, we will move on to the action item. This is the bid award for the Creekside Middle School and West Clay Elementary Site Renovations. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is work for General Trades, which is primarily concrete work around the two schools as well as asphalt paving in the parking lots. And so we're recommending that total bid awards be made of $1,615,527. I'm pleased that we had good response. We had five bids, and the bids came in under the estimate. So as you know, we've had a little struggle with that in the past, but things are looking up, so we're very pleased with these bids.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the bid awards for the Creekside Middle School and West Clay Elementary Site Renovations?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion?
Yeah, just a general question. We had spoke a little earlier that, like you said, it's, we're way under budget, the bids are. Was it 27%?
Yes, it was. 27% under the estimate. Now, the estimate was high as compared to the budget, so we're not that much under what we had originally budgeted, but we're still well under the budgeted amount, too. This is only part of the work at these two schools on the outside. And we bid this first because it had the first priority and given the uncertainty of pricing these days. But we will also be doing parking lot lights to go to LED lights and replacing a significant part, really, of the landscaping that's about 17, 18 years old.
I'm thinking of a question. Everyone's looking like they're expecting a question. Yeah, one question has, kind of generally speaking, and we've seen things go every which way. And I remember there was, I think it was a weekly report that Dr. Bearisert put out some time back, not long ago, where Westfield, the district at Westfield, was experiencing bids coming in much higher than what they had estimated.
Yes.
And so this is kind of like a sudden turnaround. And I think he said you had multiple bids, which is good, which means now you got some competition. Prices should be pretty good in that kind of a scenario. Do you, one question comes to mind, kind of a general question. I'm just still trying to understand how these things all come about. But if, like in this case, we're way under budget, and let's say this project continues on, you know, the original big capital project continues on, or we're under budget on a lot of these things. We've created a lot of excess money, so to speak, as far as what's been bid versus what we thought we'd pay. What do we do? What happens with that under run? Let's say we under run a project, what?
Yeah, we've generally not had that overall. So on this project, for example, as you'll recall, there's some other projects within these, I believe this was a part of the 23 bonds that we sold. And other projects have come in higher, so we're looking at the overall total. And we've not had, to date, a significant amount of money that was kind of left over. What happens sometimes is there are always, there are things that will come up that, kind of the like to have, but they were not included originally because, you know, we're going to address the highest priority first. And so we don't look for ways to spend money. But generally, a lot of our larger projects are at the high school, for example. So with over a million square feet of space, if we had additional funds, then we would consider whether there were immediate, you know, maintenance needs that we would like to do. And we have not done them, but if we had, you know, money available, then it would be a good use of the funds.
Do we have, like, a closeout process on a project? Like, let's say we finish these schools here, and we originally approved a budget sometime back at whatever amount. And then we come back and say, well, here's how it looked. Here's how, you know, we were under, over, or whatever.
Yeah, we've not done that formally, like with the school board and so forth, but we certainly do it internally. And so when you receive revenue from bonds, you have about three years to spend it after that because it's also earning interest. And so we're sensitive about arbitrage, which would mean that if we earn more interest than we're paying, we have to give it back, which is appropriate. And basically, it would go toward paying off the bonds. And so we do monitor that. And, but again, we've really not had kind of that problem of having money for extended periods of time. And some of these projects take, you know, some of them don't start. Like, this project is now being awarded in '24, but it was identified in probably late '22. So it's almost a year because we can't do everything at once. And so they're kind of spread out, usually over two or three years.
Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. That makes sense. As we did a tour at West Clay and saw the parking lot conditions and were able to tour the building and see. And I know some of us wanted to just see before these projects with bids to go out. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the workshop topic. Today's workshop is the biomedical science program. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening, we're very excited to share more information about our biomedical science pathway. This is one of many pathways that we have at the high school for our students to have the opportunity to learn more about different career interests that they might have. It does end in a capstone. And so we have one of our teachers that teach it and also our department chair, our science department chair, and one of our assistant principals at the high school. So I'm going to first introduce Dr. Rhonda Peterson. Dr. Peterson is one of our directors of curriculum, and she oversees science. She is going to go ahead and introduce our presenters this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley, and thank you, Board, for hosting us this evening. We are very proud of this program. I'm sure you've heard the popularity of it. Several students at our high school have high interest in completing this pathway all four years of their high school career. So here, supporting our students tonight, as Dr. Dudley said, we have Mr. Drew Grimes. He is the department chair of our science department. We have Mr. Brad Seaver. He is the assistant principal that oversees the science department. And finally, we have Mr. Craig Harper, our wonderful teacher, who oversees this program. And he is going to speak to us this evening and help us with our workshop. Thank you.
Well, good evening. My name is Craig Harper. This is my eighth year in Carmel and with the Project Lead the Way program and my 16th year teaching overall. I'm excited and pleased to be representing the Project Lead the Way teacher team. There are seven of us who work hard on this program to share about the biomedical science pathway at Carmel High School. Our goals for the evening are as follows. To put you into the shoes of a ninth grader on day one of this first-year course and walk you through, sorry. I speak with my hands a lot, and this thing's going to give me problems. Walk you through an activity, give you a sense of the student experience and why it has become a popular course, program, study for our students. To paint the big picture about the biomedical science pathway, especially the capstone course for seniors. To give you an opportunity to hear from current students and alumni and potentially a parent, if we have time, and how the program has been helpful for them and to answer any questions you have about the program. Those are our goals of the evening. I would like to introduce our current students, who have graciously given up their time to be here with you this evening. They'll be sharing their perspective on the program later, but I just want to give them a chance to give their name, their grade, and why they started as a ninth grader. If you would do that. Yeah, stand. Need a mic. Gotcha.
Hi, I'm Emerson, and I'm a senior. And I started this as a freshman just because I knew I wanted to do something in the medical field. And so I was like, okay, sure, this class sounds fun. And then I stayed in it because I knew, at the end of the fourth year, we would get to do some really cool shadowing experiences. And so, and our kids are enjoying the classes, and so that's where I'm at right now, and I really like it.
My name's Scout Phillips. I'm a senior at Carmel High School, and I started this in ninth grade mainly over, it was kind of, my mom's in biomedical science herself, and it was kind of an inspiration to me to kind of go ahead and get involved in the program. I remember seeing about it at, like, Carmel Middle School, and I figured this might be good for me. I realized after that first year I wanted to keep going just because the first year is like so, like, it's not overwhelming, but it's umbrella. There's so many things that you get to experience, and it kind of piques a different people's interest. So that's kind of what got me to that point.
Hi, my name is Liesel Schmidt. I am also a senior in the biomedical innovations class right now. And I first started the biomedical science track because I was really interested in medicine. I knew from a long time ago that I would want to be involved in something in science. I also had an older sister that had gone, she's just a grade ahead of me, and she had gone through the first class and absolutely loved it. So I was really inspired by that and chose to go ahead and join it myself.
My name is Abby, and I am a sophomore here. I kind of just, like, always was interested in medicine. And I remember in middle school, we would always have, like, the dissections and everything. And everybody was like, this is so gross, what is this? And I just remember being like, what are you talking about? Like, this is, like, interesting. So like, and I've also heard that we do, we also do dissections in these classes, and there's going to be future ones, and I don't know, I just like, really hands-on.
To give you all a sense of the student experience in the biomedical courses, we have recreated the entry event for the first units of the first year of the course. On day one of the ninth grade year, students find out that 20-year-old Anna Garcia has been found dead on a Monday morning at 10:00 a.m. in her biomedical engineering lab. Throughout this unit, students will role-play as members of the crime scene investigation team as well as the forensic lab team later on. And they get to observe and document this dramatic recreation of the scene. It's not that dramatic, but you get the idea. They start the course by generating a list of questions. What do you see? What do you wonder? Questions we need to investigate. These will be the driving questions that we follow throughout the entire first unit. They will also generate potential hypotheses about what could have happened to Anna in this lab this morning. So we recreated this lab scene today. And we're going to invite you, in just a moment, to come down and partner with our students, who have been through this before. And we're going to have you step into that role of a ninth grader. What do you see? What do you wonder? What could have happened to Anna Garcia? We'll have two of you pair up with a student, just kind of mingled down here. We will pull off the covering from Anna's poor body here in the lab. And you and your partner, if you would just do a think aloud, our students will document, just shorthand, questions that you generate. We'll see to what extent we have similarities in the questions and differences in the questions, and we'll wrap up from there. So if you would, come on around, and we'll pull off the sheets. If you would pair up with one of our students and see what you think happened. What do you see? What do you wonder? Don't be shy. Come on, Anna, get close. What do you see? What do you wonder? Come on in. What do you see? What do you wonder? Go for it. Step around. Step around. Change the, change the. Maybe you should pair to share your leading hypothesis. If you want to discuss among yourselves your leading hypothesis, we'll go group to group, share what you think happened here. Would you like to share your leading hypothesis? All right, we would, let's try to be, no repeat. Let's try to no repeat. If someone takes your leading hypothesis, see if you have another hypothesis. No, no pressure. For my ninth graders, by the end of day one, around 10 to 12, we're doing working hypotheses. They have much more time than you have, so we'll just, we'll put that out there.
Our hypothesis was that she had low blood sugar and tested herself, and it confirmed that it was low. So she drank some Snapple to try to bring it back up. I think we were in agreement that it looks like maybe she vomited blood, either as or when she passed out.
Well, we also theorized that this must have been, so this was Monday morning when she was found, that this happened Friday sometime, and that she was the only one in the room and hadn't been found. And we decided that because of the maggots and the fly. So the development from maggot to fly, the time period that that must have taken. And the blood was dried.
She works at a funeral home, so she knows this stuff.
All right, all right. Wait, wait. So what happened to that, to cause her pass? Any hypotheses about that? Good observations.
I mean, I think, I would tend to agree with the glucose drop.
There's a box up here. She's in a biomedical engineering lab. Maybe hers, maybe something she was just working on.
We said that she may have had a reaction to latex due to her medical alert bracelet and hit her head, which is what knocked over some of the items from the table, which caused the problem. We did not determine why her pants are on backward. But we heard that's just a fashion choice.
Oh, that makes more sense.
I feel a lot better than.
In the Snapple trade, in the Snapple trade.
Killed by the drug provider. I mean, well, it was cleaned by the drug provider.
Probably wouldn't have left it behind. Any other hypotheses could have gone on here? Students, any other hypotheses? What could have happened here? More important questions we still need you to answer. How about that?
What's on our phone?
Why would she take her pulse? One really important question for the students that they will get to investigate is what kind of medical history does she have? Any heart issues? Is she indeed diabetic? Or is this just since she was working off there?
Was she on school board stressed out?
Was she on school board stressed out?
She a high school senior and stressed out?
Anybody report that her missing, did her parents, where I was and she picked up from school? Was her car at the parking lot and no one said anything?
Got all the going.
Maybe some sort of bad reaction, she had breathing some toxic fumes. So many possibilities. Thank you for your participation, if you could go back, we'll talk about the rest of the course.
If anybody would like to know the conclusion from this year's autopsy, let me know, I can tell you at the end. It's a little surprising, but as you can imagine from this entry event, students will complete lab work and learn about blood typing, forensic chemistry, DNA, DNA analysis for forensics, the autopsy process, heart structure and function, type one versus type two diabetes, and toxicology. In addition to all the content, we'll learn some soft skills about teamwork and collaboration, and the value of sharing ideas, and other soft skills like that. Uh, unit culminates with the students using all of the evidence to show and explain what actually happened to Anna Garcia. Each of the four courses in this sequence of biomedical science courses uses real world scenarios to engage students and help them learn about a variety of biomedical science topics. We started this program eight years ago. We've added one program or one course each year, and currently we have twenty-six classes serving seven hundred and fifty students. There are seven teachers who have had the privilege of teaching all these courses. Our numbers over the years have, we, we had a big increase as we added courses each year. We have studied off as other capstone pathways have become available. Uh, there are now twenty-six different pathways available at Carmel High School, but our numbers are staying pretty steady. Each of the foundations courses culminates in a project lead the way national exam for which we get data for our students. The fourth year, the senior capstone course, which I teach, is a little bit unique, and I want to spend some time talking, sharing with you about this. It's titled biomedical innovations. The first goal as a capstone course is to refresh and add foundational knowledge to what they've learned from their previous three years. It truly is the cap on top of the foundation. These capstone challenges require students to put it all together and apply concepts in ways that they haven't had to do so in the first three years. Project Lead the Way provides several different problems for us to focus on, and this is our curriculum. For example, you can see in problem seven, the forensic autopsy, a lot of the forensic stuff comes back up. But we add to it, throughout the first three years, students have dissected several things, but they've never dissected a whole organism. So in the fourth year, they get to dissect a fetal pig, do a lab practical like they would do in a college class, and we attend a field trip to the IU School of Medicine to the human cadaver lab, previewing an important experience many will have as undergrads and then grad programs. And we'll say it's been a formative experience for many students to go to the IU School of Medicine Cadaver Lab. Some of them have loved it and it's really reaffirmed their interest in medicine, and others have changed their majors. And I think that's a really valuable experience. Given how expensive college is, we don't want them to get into college and think they're going to be going to medicine and have to switch after their sophomore year and cost themselves dollars and time and credits. Another major goal, and as a career pathway, is to increase, help students get exposure to a variety of careers. Um, it's, it's always a challenge in a way to do this authentically, and the best way I've found is to have guest speakers come in. So throughout the year, just this year, for example, we've had all of these individuals come in. These are people who practice in our community, uh, who I've either met over the years or we've gotten connected with as parents of our students. Uh, we try to show students all the variety of things you can go do, both long, require many years of school, and some that are entry level. Every one, one of my favorite parts is having former students come back and share their experiences as college students and give advice on Valentine's Day, on Wednesday. We've got a recent IU grad who's a neuroscience major, she just got into the IU School of Medicine, and she had research experience in Alzheimer's lab, and she's going to come back and share her experience with our students. So this is the kinds of things I really enjoy and the opportunity to do as part of this course. Our final big main goal for the biomedical innovations course, as opposed to preparing for the students for a national exam, the students have a unique culminating goal to develop innovative solutions for the most pressing health challenges of the twenty-first century. This goes pretty far beyond just those capstone challenges and building on their foundation knowledge. This challenges students to think big picture. If we're going to do this successfully, students need to know what are the most pressing health challenges. So we spend a fair amount of time looking at health in the United States, the bird's eye view, healthcare in the United States, and starting to think about, oops, sorry, what do innovative solutions to improve health look like? This can be in the world of prevention and public health, it could be in the world of early diagnosis and new innovations, it could be innovations in treatment and patient care. The final quarter of the year culminates in an independent project experience where students can do, have a choice of developing innovative solutions to the health challenges or conducting science research with health implications. What makes this unique is that it gives students an opportunity to really distinguish themselves and to pursue their own learning interests. Been able to set up opportunities for students to learn outside the walls of Carmel High School through shadowing, through interviewing professionals, through service learning, and connecting with nonprofits, depending on their interests. It gives students a real opportunity to learn about and integrate topics that are interesting to them, whether that be business, or engineering, or coding, or art, or film, or policy. And it gives students a chance to use projects for competitions. This is one of the things we've really done in the last two years, I'm going to share a couple of examples of these projects. Last year, we had two students who developed an early detection tool for urinary tract infections. This attaches to an end dwelling catheter, it syphons off a sample of urine and can detect white blood cells, which would be a sign of urinary tract infection pre-symptomatic before the patient starts having symptoms. Once a patient, especially in a hospital setting, has a urinary tract infection, it can progress up the kid, up to the kidneys and go and cause sepsis and death pretty quickly. It's a pretty major problem, lots of dollars, probably in the neighborhood of forty billion dollars of healthcare costs. These two students, Nathan Durkman and Michaela Phillips, were inspired by their shadowing experience and saw an opportunity. They put together a business pitch for this competition called Innovate Within. I've been able to be a teacher on a teacher fellowship group that, uh, works with Innovate Within. And last year, Butler, on June thirteenth, they were awarded twenty-five thousand dollars to start their business. You can see them there with Governor Holcomb. We had one other team as state finalists, Hani, Loda, and Jacqueline Roth, who were also state finalists, and you can see them there with Governor Holcomb. We've had students the past three years do very well at Innovate Within, and it's a great way for their student, their projects to go beyond the walls of Carmel High School, uh, and provide them with some real life benefits. In addition to the twenty-five thousand dollars, which they have in a business account for their innovation, they also got ten thousand dollars into their five twenty-nine accounts, uh, that they're using up at Purdue University. Nathan's pre-med, Michaela's biomedical engineering, and they're continuing to work with a professor there to improve their prototype. Here you can see a few of the examples of some of our top projects from the past few years and some that have won awards or have patents pending. You see the early diagnosis of the hospital acquired urinary tract infections. One of my favorites is a student who, from his EMT course, had participated in ride along, saw an opportunity. He had arrived at a scene with the EMTs, and the patient was non-responsive. They knew nothing about this patient and their medical history. His idea was an innovative device where you could scan a fingerprint, and on an iPad, their medical history would pop up. Obviously, this person would have to give consent to have their, uh, medical history linked, but in a case where somebody might have an incident where they need medical care, this could allow the EMTs access to health records and improve their emergency care. He has a provisional patent, he's a biomedical engineering student up at Purdue, and he's continued this, this work. We have a student who was interested in business. She had, she'd read an article and came up with an idea about an innovative bandage made from sustainable fish skin, uh, omega threes and this sort of thing, to promote better wound healing. She was an Innovate Within state finalist three years ago, she was our first Innovate state finalist. And she's down at the Kelly School and is a biotech major, pursuing this and has an official LLC with a patent for her idea. Had a three gentlemen who had an idea of, uh, it's kind of like an insulin pump that somebody would wear, a wearable device to improve access to treatment for opioid addiction. Uh, to get treatment in the Midwest, it's typically a one hour drive both ways, and you've got to go daily. It's pretty prohibitive to get treatment and, uh, both geographically and, and other things. Their wearable device was an Innovate Within, within award winner, and they went on to their respective universities and are continuing to work on that too with a patent pending. One other example of an award winner, we had two girls who came up with an innovative strategy to reduce food waste and address food insecurity. They were Samsung's solve for tomorrow state finalists, and they've been working with Kroger, trying to get their idea implemented in the real world. We try to find something for all of our students and a way for them to integrate their interests and, and have the project serve them well. For students who are interested in computer science, they have, can do some coding. Uh, last year, we had a student who made a new app to help consumers find the closest in-network healthcare facilities. You can imagine, if, uh, I've got a first grader, I get a call, she broke her arm over at Smokey Row, I want to make sure I take her to a hospital, to an emergency room that's in network. You see horror stories all the time about the big bills that somebody would get. Their app, if you popped in your health information, integrated with Google Maps, it would show you the nearest and, and, uh, the time it'd take to get there. It was a really cool idea, and they're still working on it too. We had a girl who was really interested in fashion. She was part of our Fashion and Consumer Science Program at Carmel High School. And she was in the fourth year of biomedical science. She was headed to, uh, Fashion Institute in New York. She was thinking, what can I do for my idea? So we brainstormed, we brainstormed. She was thinking about her grandmother and how her grandmother and the nurse's aide who takes care of her grandmother have a really hard time changing her clothes. It's mobility, uh, getting things on and off. The few options that existed, her grandma didn't like, and so she came up with a whole new fashion line that she made in her fashion class to improve senior, senior comfort and mobility and make it easier for her nurse's aide to take care of her. We had a student who was a, uh, student trainer last year, who noticed in the training room at Carmel High School, uh, it was pretty unorganized, and none of the trainers knew who was coming in or out, uh, wasn't sure how to do follow-up. She noticed an opportunity, she came up with a proposal and went to Mr. Enskee, and, uh, Mr. Enskee funded her project for two thousand dollars last year, they got some iPads, they reinvented the process for the training room at Carmel High School. It's been very much improved this year, it was a really cool legacy project that she did. Lastly, I had a student very much interested in health policy last year. Uh, she'd worked with the state representative in the summer, so we were trying to think about her. What could, how, what could, kind of a project could serve you well? Uh, she approached her state representative and found a gap in Indiana state law, and she helped the state representative introduce a bill proposal for a new prescription drug monitoring system in Indiana this fall. Uh, I don't know the status of that and, and what came of it. It was a really cool for her, experience for her. I guess I just wanted to, before I let our current students share, um, from students shadowing and seeing organ transplants and open heart surgeries, which students did last year, to engineering prototypes, to working with local businesses for food waste, to conducting advanced lab work at IUPY, students get unique learning experiences that pay future dividends for them in interviews for competitive programs, for scholarships, for college research labs, for internships. The opportunity to learn in the real world and distinguish oneself beyond the transcript makes a senior year of biomedical science pretty unique. I'm really grateful to be able to teach it, to be honest. At this point, I would like to invite our student panel to share their perspectives on the program and why it's been valuable for them. I'll also ask the seniors to share about their future interests and how their projects that they're thinking about, starting here in about a month, or a few weeks, only a couple of weeks, uh, how their project connects to their future. I'm going to give you a microphone. Maybe.
Um, just to introduce myself again, my name is Emerson and I am a senior. Um, so I have really enjoyed the biomedical experience, um, because it's taught me a lot and, and it's given me really good preparation for, um, my future career as a nurse. Um, currently, I'm doing a capstone experience, um, not only in biomedical, but also through the CNA course. And so I'm doing a work-based learning experience, and so I'm interning at IU North Hospital on the post-surgical unit. And so my blue days, the first half of my day, I go and work, um, basically as, mostly as a, um, patient care assistant. So I get to take blood sugars and vitals, um, I can do bed baths, um, I just recently learned how to do blood work, um, and just basically assist the nurses and the PCA's who are working on the floor. Um, but it's been really cool to have all of this background experience from biomedical, um, to be able to apply to what I see every day on the unit. Um, one of the things that really stuck out to me was at the beginning of the school year, we were talking a lot about, um, we talked a lot about diabetes, um, and how the US is the leader, world leader of, um, lower leg amputations, which happens because of uncontrolled diabetes. Um, and then later on, when I was at work, I was able to interact with the patient who had had an amputation and though it wasn't, I wasn't excited for that patient to have experienced that, but it was really interesting to be able to connect things that I've learned in class to things that I get to experience, like everyday, real world, um, actually in a hospital. Um, so building off of that, my independent project, I just came up with the idea on Friday. Um, I was shadowing, I got experience to shadow in the ICU. Um, and unfortunately, we had a patient who had passed away, and the nurse that I was working with, um, she was interacting with the patient's family, um, and I was kind of unsure, I was like, I don't really know what to say. Um, I'm not really sure what to do in this situation. So, uh, for my independent project, I'm going to work on putting together, um, innovative resource for the students who are going to be in the work-based learning capstone next year to be able to know how to kind of navigate the situations of the patients, um, really upset or angry or is going back and forth between emotions, or if they're really confused. Um, things that aren't really skill level, skills, but are still really important to know how to use every day. So, thank you.
Um, I want to reintroduce myself as well. I'm Scout Phillips, and I know a few of you in the crowd know that I'm, oh, for biomedical specifically, it's valuable to me, I think, not only is the information I'm learning really, like, important to me as an individual when growing up as an adult, um, I've learned a lot of about like communication and being able to work with others, um, and being, making sure it's like professional. I, I know that sounds kind of weird, especially as like a ninth grader, thinking about professionalism, but I know that's gotten me pretty far with my connections and my relationships with my teachers and my peers, esp- and additionally with people like in the real world and people that may not be involved with Carmel. My future interests, I know a few of you know that like I do a lot of culinary arts and stuff like that, and I front our culinary arts program at Carmel High School. And I think what's really like special, especially about the fourth year and Mr. Harper teaching it, he's really good at connecting with the students and making sure that we, like, get to inter, like intertwine our personal interest in other things along with biomedical science, which kind of segues into what I decided to do for my, you know, my project direction. I decided to take part of Innovate Within, which is like a business, like, young entrepreneurial business pitch, and I wanted to do like a commercialized MTM, so medically tailored meals are a thing all around the nation. They're specifically found in hospitals where a dietitian will walk you through the things that you should be eating to benefit your health. Um, I know food has always been kind of treated as a medicine, especially, probably not in American culture, but, uh, other places around the world, food is very, very important to people's health, and I think that's something that needs to be addressed here in America, because obesity is kind of the next new thing. Um, and I know a lot of pharmaceutical companies are trying to address that, and I think trying to address it not through a drug, but through healthy meal planning, I think we could maybe address some of the obesity issues here in America. So I'm pitching, like I said, a commercialized medical tailored meal company where we'll make already made, prepared food for people who, you know, let's say you have type two diabetes. diabetes, you'll go on our online profile and then select recipes that you feel like you're interested in and you can, you know, if you have allergies, like knock some things out, but it gives people the opportunity to start eating healthy and kind of get them on the right track in addressing their health. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Liesel Schmidt and once again, I'm a senior in Mr. Harper's class, biomedical innovations. Biomed has been really cool for me because kind of like I said earlier, I've always wanted to go into medicine. That's always been something that I've had a natural affinity for and I also really enjoyed doing. So I think with biomedical, I've learned how to learn in such a variety of ways. We have hands-on experiences like this, we have online research that we've done, we have dissections that we do and a lot of, like Scout was saying, we've had a lot of teamwork involved with that and I think that's been really valuable for me, especially with my pursuits into going into medicine. Additionally, I've had a recent opportunity to go down to Baylor University to have a scholarship event where you get acceptance into their medical school as well. So part of that was very relevant with biomedical innovations because we've learned about a lot of the most pressing health challenges right now in the US and that was exactly what we were doing at this large scholarship event. We were doing case studies about what are the most pressing health challenges and how can we be innovative with our solutions in addressing these challenges. So that has been really cool for me to just be able to use my biomedical science experiences at Carmel and then really carry it on into the collegiate level. For my future project, I am doing something with the Carmel Crime Lab. I am super weirdly interested in forensic science. I love true crime. So I absolutely wanted to integrate that into my education, whether or not I use it later on in life, I'm just super interested. So I'm going to the Carmel Crime Lab, I'm going to be doing several shadow experiences and yeah, hopefully I'll figure out something from there. I recently just finished an independent project with, it's like a brain device, it's called a neuromaker, I think is what it's called, and it tracks your EEG waves and I was looking at, how can we use this in polygraphs? Would it be held up in court if you could subconsciously recognize if people are lying by just analyzing their brainwaves? So yeah, I want to figure out more of what to do in forensic science and I just love biomedical innovations. I could go on and on, but yeah.
My name is Abby and I'm a sophomore, so I haven't really gone through all of that yet, but for biomedical, the first year we really went into biology and like the heart and blood flow and blood types, like all of that, diabetes and like, yeah, that was interesting, but I want to say that's not necessarily something that's my main interest. And for HBS, human body systems, which is a class that I'm in right now, it's really talking about different types of the body. And one of like the most interesting units that I did was the neurology, the brain, what different like patterns of the brain are, like how you can see how people act through how the way just their brain is shaped, all of that. So I think biomedical and like the entire like course of it just really shows you like there's different parts to it. Like if you're into medicine, it's not just like, oh, you're into medicine, it's into a specific part. And like also like the guest speakers we have, like it really just like lets you know that like there's multiple options out there for you. So, yeah.
Finally, I asked a couple of alumni to submit videos. Should we play them? We're over on time? Or we could have Ms. Schmidt, Betsy Schmidt speak instead. We'll play one, how about that? I think this is one of the best.
Hi, my name is Rahul Devathu and I'm a first-year medical student here at Stanford Medical School. And most previously I was in Northwestern University studying data science and neuroscience. I was asked to speak a bit today about the PLTW biomedical science program and wanted to share a bit more about how it was a cornerstone of my experience during high school. I really think that the program gave me the foundations that I needed in terms of bringing together a lot of different subjects in an interdisciplinary manner. I think it showed me the value of innovation and allowed me to apply what I had learned in a way that no other class had up until that point. And that all culminated in a project that allowed me to integrate my very skills and interest in a real tangible project. My specific project was making a medical device that would improve bystander CPR and it came up even years after during my medical school interviews. Personally, it seeded a passion within me to innovate within medicine that drives me to this day and I think it gave me a unique opportunity to bring together data science, computer science and medicine, even foundational sciences like chemistry and biology in a way that I think no other course or sequence is able to do. And that was a very exciting part of my high school career. I'm very excited to see the progress made by future generations of students in the PLTW biomedical sequence, especially under the guidance of Mr. Harper.
Can we watch the other video too, please? We really want to see the other video.
Hi. Hi, my name is Ria and I am a senior at Vanderbilt and I am studying public health, psychology and biology on the pre-medical track. I did the four-year PLTW program at Carmel High and it completely laid the foundation for me in terms of kind of igniting my passion for medicine and really for helping me to understand what it means to understand medicine, be a healthcare worker and all of these different aspects of the healthcare system. I was able to apply concepts that I learned in ninth grade such as sickle cell anemia and insulin resistance and diabetes in my biochemistry class that I took just last year. And there are so many parts of the PLTW program that I've been able to carry into my college experience, whether that's when I'm shadowing and I've recognized a disease that we've talked about in class or when I applied to a research lab and they were so impressed that I knew how to conduct ELISA assays because we learned how to do that through PLTW. There are just so many benefits from the PLTW program, not only in terms of helping me realize that I wanted to pursue medicine, but just giving me such a big step up over a lot of people here at the school who have not had the same opportunities that I have. So I'm super grateful for that, especially with my fourth year of being in the program. We learned a lot about the social determinants of health and public health in general and that really drove me into wanting to pursue public health. And I'm now pursuing an MD and PH combined degree because I am hoping to pretty much study and combat maternal mortality and go into working on health disparities within maternal health and the different things that affect maternal health in the United States. So I would just like to say that this would not have been possible without PLTW and I'm so grateful to have gotten that experience and I'd like to shout out Mr. Harper.
We don't need that, we don't need that. This is my, my last one here. And so in summary, I love this program. From learning how COVID tests work to learning how we would test for antibodies, oh, so many real world, so much world, real world knowledge about a wide variety of health and biomedical topics and careers. It complements and extends what they're learning in the CNA program and AP Bio and health class in general. The health literacy aspect is such important for students to go forward with topics, majors, public health, these sorts of things that they're not getting in their other courses necessarily. And just the opportunities for students to pursue projects that align with their future goals beyond just a grade on the transcript. So that's kind of what we're about and it's a pleasure to be part of that program. Questions for anyone?
Back to Mr. Grimes. I'm going to start with some comments. So, Mr. Harper, you are one of my favorite educators at Carmel High School. For sure, for sure. As a parent and having a student in your class, I found you to be responsive, helpful, communicative and that you empower students to reach their fullest potential and even dream outside of that. So I thank you for that. You're an asset here, so you may not retire ever. I'll also say to the student that said she really liked the crime, true crime shows, I used to as well. I wanted to be an investigator at crime scenes and so then I learned that I didn't have the stomach for it. So I didn't go that direction, but keep pursuing that. I'll also say that my daughter loved her experience in biomedical and I attribute her major in public health and epidemiology largely coming from her experience in the program. So thank you, thank you and thank you. That's it.
Katie?
Thank you, thank you. One of your presenters is my favorite and I know I'm not supposed to be biased, but she's my first born. So that's why I have extra, but I think it's so neat to see what it's already done for her in her short time period, to see the culmination of the different things. She had the advantage, the opportunity to also participate in Avid and so I'll embarrass her for a second. So she came downstairs, I don't know, a year or so ago and she's like, she interrupted our television program, how dare she? And she's like, I need to show you something. And we're like, okay. And so she screen mirrored onto like the television, a PowerPoint presentation about how she wanted to be an anesthesiologist and how these are all the classes she needed to take in high school in order to get there. This is what she needed to go to get her undergrad in and what she needed to do, what tests she had to take, all these different things. And project lead the way was on that pathway to her. So I love the fact that not only Avid showed her how to do a presentation, but also the fact that Carmel High School has an opportunity for kids like that. You know, she wants to do the EMT program, she has all these different excitement things and I think it is so incredibly amazing that our students have the opportunity to get firsthand experience, to know what they want to do and like it was talked about, to know what they don't want to do. I am definitely one of those college students who changed my major sophomore year and lost a whole bunch of classes because I decided I didn't want to do what I originally thought. So it would have been so nice to learn early on that even though that may have been my dream when I was, you know, 15 and it's okay that my dream changed, you know, later on. So thank you again. Kudos again to the teachers in this program for all that you guys do for our students and I appreciate you students coming here tonight and presenting to us. So thank you.
Yeah, I did what you said about having pathways available. I think it's great that kids can try things early and learn rather than getting into the colleges and then find out that's not right for them. So I think that's great to have pathways. This is a really good one particularly. Question I have is, does a student have to enroll at the beginning, like in ninth grade to be in the pathway or could they jump in at a later time?
That's a great question. Originally, yes. Originally, the way the course sequence went was that the principal's course, students took as a ninth grade and then the human body systems 10th grade and so on. So there was a very clear-cut course sequence, four-year program. What we are changing to add flexibility is they still have to do the prerequisites, but they can actually take them concurrently. So they, they have to take the first year course as a standalone, just because I, just to reiterate what one of the students said, it's a, it's kind of a lot, it's a little bit overwhelming that first year. But then their 10th grade year, they could take the two years, the human body systems and biomedical interventions, their 10th grade year concurrently. Or they could take them their 11th grade year concurrently. So there's flexibility in that 10th and 11th grade year. And then we are maintaining that you must be a 12th grader to take the capstone course.
And just one last question, is there any kind of like a state certification that they earn if they take the whole program and get certain degree or grades?
This has changed over the years. There was a partnership with Ivy Tech, it was a dual credit and Ivy Tech sort of dissolved that dual credit. There's no, currently if students were to matriculate at IU I, previously IU PUI, they can get some college credit there. Purdue used to allow transfer credits from Ivy Tech to come in, so students could get some credits. No certifications per se. Some, some schools do that. It seems a little bit outside of the main focus typically, so.
Thank you. We, we did try last year to meet with both PLTW and Ivy Tech to see if they would reconsider making the fourth year course a dual credit course and it was to no avail. Ivy Tech said they didn't have any courses that were in direct alignment with the, with the fourth year course.
Could you talk a little bit about the EMT and the CNA program?
Sure. So just as Emerson mentioned, and I actually had the pleasure of, over a two-week span, I went on the biomedical field trip with Emerson to the cadaver lab. And then the next week I got to visit her in action at IU, at IU North here. So the CNA program starts 11th grade, it's a two-year program and students have the opportunity to, just like Emerson did, earn their CNA certification, their 11th grade year and then their 12th grade year have a work-based learning experience and apply their, their CNA certification. So Emerson is one of several students that we have. We have three other students at IU North, we have one at Saxony and they are, they're getting paid in that, that capstone course. So that's the CNA program. And then the EMT program is a two-year course and students, actually just on Saturday, the students in that course took the EMR certification test and then in May they'll take the EMT certification test. It's a little bit different. As part of that course, they have to get shadowing experiences, so many hours on an ambulance, but it is a, is a two-year course as well.
My only question, I think we all would like to know what happened to Anna.
So this year, she had a genetic condition that made her prone to blood clotting. She was taking some anticoagulants to prevent the blood clots, but somebody had switched out her medicines. So she actually had a blood clot form, it went to the lungs, pulmonary embolism, she fainted and hit the ground. She was actually not a type 1 diabetic in this scenario. She was doing some research with, with the different tools, but it changes from year to year to keep things interesting, but. She died about 28 hours prior to this. So she was found Monday at 20, 10:00 AM, so about Saturday night at midnight.
I'm glad you answered or she would have been calling Dr. Beresford and being like, I need to know what happened. So he appreciates it.
Or you would have gotten an email about it. All right, thank you so much. We really enjoyed this presentation. Thank you. We give a round of applause. And next on the agenda is updates, Dr. Beresford.
What a great night. I really appreciate everything you guys shared tonight. It's really important for our board and the community to see what's going on in our classrooms and what kind of, what your experiences are and the videos of the alumni is fantastic. And am I right, there's a parrot here that was going to speak? I would like to yield my time to hear from you, if that'd be okay.
So my name is Betsy Schmidt. I am the program director of the PA program at Butler University. And so my perspective comes from both being in higher ed as well as being a mom of two girls that have gone through this program. And I think many of the things that I would say have already been touched on, the individuality of the program and how the program really does allow students to develop their interest in a number of different ways and not just similar students. My two girls are very dissimilar, not only in their interests, but also in their educational, I don't want to say capabilities, but approaches and. And one is very intrinsically motivated. The other is not. And both really found motivation and inspiration through the four years of the program. And both are carrying it into college and into their careers. I also think their exposure to interprofessional education, medical terminology, labs, public health, a number of different things that they will need to understand as they go into any kind of biomed career, and especially social determinants of health. And the way that that's done in a, in an engaging and active learning kind of environment, I just can't say enough about that. It really draws in a number of students and piques their interest in a way that makes a challenging course really doable and inspiring and empowering. And then finally, the ability to begin to understand how college-level research is done. I can't tell you, I've had several students that have come through the Project Lead the Way in the PA program. And just to have that basis and enthusiasm for lifelong learning already kind of modeled for them. And when the going gets tough in medical education to already have a vision for how I'm going to be a difference maker long-term in medicine is really, really cool. So, thank you to all the teachers in this program, but especially Mr. Harper.
Thank you. And as a dad of a Baylor School of Nursing graduate who's now working in Dallas in a children's hospital, this is just really, really good to hear. So I appreciate everything that you've shared with us tonight. And I'm kind of in that age group where I'm going to be needing some replacement parts and things. So as you guys graduate from medical school and on all that, you know, I would hope I'd get a small discount, you know, maybe on a few procedures or something. But no, thank you so much. And I appreciate all the work that's from the front row there that's had to happen to make this happen for so many kids that we have. Really, really exciting, exciting stuff. So I got my report. I'm going to, I'll go fast, but we have a lot going on here in Carmel Clay School. So first one is I got a chance to stop by the library and check out our district art show. I know you guys get to see the art show. I tell you, we have so much talent in this district. If you get a chance, I highly recommend that you stop by. It's right in the main, you know, the main opening area there on the first floor at the library. And I would recommend that you start on the right side, which is where you'll find our elementary kids. And you'll see how our, as you work from right to left, you'll see how our young artists grow and how their creativity. Now, don't get me wrong, you'll see a polar bear that's winking that one of our elementary, earlier elementary kids had done. That's will make you smile for sure. But as you move towards the left side, you'll see how they grow in detail and creativity and different types of art, from colored pencils to fabric to jewelry to photography, paint, chalk, you name it. And it's, by the time you get to the far left, it's professional grade. So anyhow, kudos to the students and the art teachers who inspire our kids and teach them all the different things that they learn. But wow, pretty big. I want to do a shout-out for our cheerleaders who placed eighth in the nation, Carmel High School Cheerleaders. And it was in the Small Game Day Division. I think it was down in Orlando, Florida. And so did us proud and at the national level there. Those girls put in a lot of work, and they are so precise. I mean, when they flipped their ponytails, they all landed exactly the same time. It's the most amazing thing. And it's no surprise that they're one of the best squads in the nation. So congratulations to the girls. And of course, the coaches, well done. Moving over to Creekside Middle School, they were the champions of the Math Counts Regional. So now they won, but also Carmel Middle School placed third and Clay placed fourth. So we have our, all three of our middle schools are going to the state finals at Rose Holman coming up. And so Math Counts is a national mathematics competition. So we're very proud of our mathletes, and we wish them well as they go to the state competition coming up. Later this week, I believe it's Thursday, I'm proud to report that four of our elementary schools are going to be recognized by Secretary Jenner at the Indiana Department of Education for being tops in the state on the IREED III testing. Smokey Row, College Wood, Prairie Trace, and Woodbrook Elementary Schools will attend the ceremony. And Carmel Clay Schools had the third highest average of IREED passage in the state of Indiana. So real proud of our staff and the work that's done. And maybe our foundations is paying off here. So a lot of good things happening. Back to Carmel High School. Carmel High School's choir program shined at the First Show Choir Competition. Huge congratulations to the ambassadors and accents who both swept their divisions at the 2024 Pike Music Fest Show Choir Contest this past Saturday. So this is their first competition of the year. They took home the grand champion trophy and as well as captions for best vocals, best choreography. Accents were also awarded best show design. Gabby Bradley and Marley Whitlock were named best performer. So what a great start, you know, to the season of, a season of beautiful performances. So if you see any of these kids, give them a high five and wish them well in their next competition. Put this on your calendar, that they will present their shows in our home auditorium at a Carmel Clay School Staff and Student Preview Night on Wednesday, March 13th. So a chance to see the shows. They travel all over the place to compete. So it's kind of nice to see it here on the home turf. And then we come down to the bell ringer, and this one wasn't too tough. My bell ringer has to be our girls swim and dive team, who won their 38th consecutive state championship on Saturday. The meet featured two state records set by greyhound swimmers. Alex Shackle, who broke her own state record from Friday night. She broke it again on Saturday. And then Lindsay Bowen broke her own state record from last year in the 500 Free by over two seconds. So that's a pretty big, a pretty big piece. The 500 Free, we, the hounds went one, two, three, first, second, and third. And so they, I think Carmel went eight of 11 of the swim events, and we placed two divers in the top eight. And we have not had a diver in state competition that I can remember. And so we placed two there. So we, that's why I was emphasizing swim and dive team, because that's pretty special. They brought home 21 medals. Here's an amazing fact. We had 25 swimmers advance to the finals. The only, that's out of a possible 27. So 19 of those students swam in the A finals, which is the highest heat. And then we had six students, six swimmers in the B finals. And of those six, three of them won that heat. So it's a pretty, pretty amazing thing. I'm always amazing, amazed at the performances these girls because they're just flat out fast. And boy, can they move water. But I would also like to give it a shout-out to our own Dr. Ferris here. He received a 10 on his belly flop as he joined the team for the victory plunge at the end of the meet. So, big congratulations to the swim team on their 38th, that's a national record, consecutive state championship. And I don't see any signs of that program slowing down. And then on a personal note, I just want to thank a lot of people, the diocese here and also out in the schools and around for all the well wishes I had on my knee surgery. And I've been describing myself as I'm a weebel right now. I don't have a cane. I don't have a crutch or a walker or wheelchair. But I wobble, but I don't fall down. I won't fall down yet. But I wanted to do a special shout-out to Mrs. David Duke's kindergarten class, who sent me personalized drawings and get well cards. There were two students in that group that sent extremely detailed renditions of my facility dog, Jim Dandy. And so very, very artistic. And then also at, it was Creekside's Student Athletic Board. Those guys were just the kings and queens of positivity, but they took time to send some, make some homemade cards to just make my day, brighten my day. And so I appreciate all of the well wishes. And hopefully, you know, I won't miss as much work moving on from here. So, and with that, I will conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. It's good to have you back. And thank you to Dr. Ostrom for stepping in while you were gone. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Meeting adjourned.